That's Jim. I'm pretty sure it's him. Yeah.
Welcome, everybody. Tonight is the 13th of December. It's about seven o'clock. Give it a minute. And I think we have a full board here. Jamie, can you confirm that that's Jim real quick?
Jim, are you on Zoom there? Jim, can you hear us? I'll ask him.
Okay. Then at this point, it's great. Jim is famous in terms of number ten. That's that means, if you can give her.
This is Tim.
Oh, that's Jim.
I just wanted to let you know I'm here.
Thank you, Jim. We have three cases tonight, and after the three cases, we'll spend a little bit of time with our friend Joel. And we'll get a potential ordinance being held for CNN, Brock, et cetera, which I know that someone new has some interest in. Keep in mind, though, that this is kind of, I don't, Joel, fear to say, you have nothing. You haven't started correctly.
I have ten months of issues on the basis of status.
Okay. Well, we'll see how we go, but I don't think we'll be looking at public input per se on ordinance, because it's like the first step. So no reason to get all concerned about what's in the template at this point, because, well, none of us have seen it. Nor shall you, I guess, as well. First case tonight. Case 2302, consideration of a request from Patricia Savory for additional use permit for earth moving of more than 25 cubic yards. Deck within 25 feet of lakes, otherwise known as shoreline, to the purpose of replacing an existing retaining wall at 50 Mariner Cook Station Lane. Town map 56 lot four. Pat, you're here.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you just give us a quick recap, please, of exactly what you want to do?
There's a forty-year-old retaining wall along that one property. About seventy-five feet long, four foot. And that retaining wall is to separate and move to replace it to hold the road. So it's a very, you can handle it.
Got you. Questions from anybody in the board? Ed?
Pat, I took a look at the application. Did appreciate the photos. They were very helpful. The only question I had, I did see you had the permit by rule from the DPs. And as well as our request for action, just wanted to confirm this wall is going in, the new wall is going in exactly the same location as previous?
Absolutely.
It will not be any closer to the water? Okay, very good. That's all I need to hear. Otherwise, I have no further question.
Greg?
Oh, yeah, I had a couple. Just wanted to double check. There's no change in elevation or grade?
No, gas pedal level where it is, where the road is. Yes.
Okay. Are they going to be adding a footer, a full footer underneath?
That's a question for my contractor. I can perhaps do one for soon. But Greg, what are you speaking about specifically?
One of my big concerns is, you know, the concrete truck down that road would be, you know, a challenge. And especially when the retaining wall already failing. So if they were going to pour something, would they be pouring it by hand or would they pour by machine? And usually when you're pouring a footer, you're going to dig down deeper and wider. And I wanted to make sure they're going to make, you know, they're going to put up, I'm assuming they're going to do, you know, the self fences and everything to protect the area while they're doing the work. But there's a lot, sometimes you have to excavate if you're going to put a footer in. And it sounded like you just wanted it in the same place with the same design. So I just, there wasn't really that detail. So I just kind of wanted to get a sense for any additional disturbance to a footer or anything like that.
I haven't looked at my quote in a while, but I don't believe concrete is involved. He's going to lay those stones, those retaining stones on top and secure them into the under the road. I don't think concrete is part of the issue. Can I come back to the email?
Yeah, I guess I just, I wanted to make sure about the, about the short disturbance. That was, I guess, you know, the disturbance of the ground. The further you dig down, the more you're going to have to excavate. And I didn't want him to have to leave a lot of material or bring a lot of material in.
From what all I've read and seen, I don't think that's.
Okay.
We go with that and Greg, as they always have questions. Now, now we're around the table. Greg, any questions for the applicant? You're good. Ms. Betty?
I don't believe so. Is there any moving of trees or?
No, 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 no.
I mean, they've done. That's it.
Okay, Erin?
Yeah.
You're good. Good, good. No, Dylan? Jamie? I didn't believe that we threatened it, but I could even say. Let's open it up to the public. Anybody have a question or comment on this application? And actually, Jim, let me reach out to you. I'm not trying to skip you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, so public portion is closed. What's the feeling of the board?
Pretty straightforward, Greg. Could someone make a motion?
I will make motion. That case number 23-02, consideration of request for Patricia Savory for conditional use permit for earth moving of more than 25 cubic yards within 250 feet of lakes for the purposes of replacement of an existing retaining wall at 50 Mariner Cook Station to 50 Mariner Cook Station Lane on town map 56 lot four. The proof is presented.
Do we have a second? We've got a motion for Matt, a second from Betty. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? And let's reach out to James if we could.
Jim, are you in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor. It takes me a minute to get my phone unmuted. Sorry.
No worries.
Thank you, Jim. Next up. Case number 2303. Consideration of a request from Thomas, his advisor. Thank you. For additional use permit for earth moving of more than 25 cubic yards within 250 feet of lake for the purpose of expanding an existing non-conforming structure living space and adding in Raj at 27 Rocky Haven, uh, Hayden Lane, town map 25 lot 23. Please, Billson, briefly.
Well, basically, what I'll 24, uh, 16 by 20 addition. At two, that would be a garage.
Hey. Will you guys see that it's a little over 100 feet from the water?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and you? I may take some of Ed's thunder. What's going underneath the additions?
We're doing the the fourth part of the wall.
Okay.
Living area. Garage, I don't want I'd have to ask somebody about the garage. But it's kind of maybe probably the same old wood. With us flat.
Okay. I think I noticed that you actually have got a basement level.
Yes, sir.
Would you have a basement level extended beneath the addition?
No.
Okay. Okay, that was my question. Ed?
Actually, I have several. I typically do. And the first one, actually, I want to point out was a little bit of a clerical issue is the application was for earth moving and for expansion of a non-conforming structure. The the way the agenda is written up, it's just consideration for conditional use permit for earth moving for an existing non-conforming structure. But we actually have to do approval for both. Kind of even though they're connected project, they're sort of separate item. One is for the earth moving. And second one is for the expansion of non-performing structure. So, and they certainly could be considered together, but I just need to make sure that it's clear in the records that it is, in fact, two separate items. The questions I had. I did not visit the site. And I'm working solely off the the application was submitted with a drawing with a variety of measurements on it. But I have nothing on here that I can see that tells me how far the existing structure is away from the water. There seemed to be a a line going to the through the building, but not to the existing deck, which is considered part of the existing structure. So I am not able to get a sense for how far away from the water the existing deck is and how far away from the water any of the new structure would be. And I think I think that's kind of a critical part of what we're doing is is determining what is non-conforming and what exactly what exactly the new structure, where that's going to lay in relation to the shore frontage. So I guess, I'm not sure how to approach this other than if someone has accurate measurements that they can provide to the deck, not to the building itself, but to the deck. And the second thing on these measurements, they there are also a number of other measurements to the sidelines and so forth. But they're not taken at ninety-degree angles to the sidelines, and they're not necessarily representing the closest point to any any sideline or any shore frontage. So I basically really have nothing. Nothing that I can look at that tells me where is this in relation to the water?
Well, the the stated area is the existing structure.
Right. I understand. I understand what the existing structure is. But I see no measurement to the closest point of the existing structure, which does include the deck. That is part of the existing structure. Not, it's not the building, but the building and the deck. And that's really kind of what we need to determine, because I do see a basement of hundred and six feet from one corner of the I guess, one corner of the actual house. But there's nothing to tell me how how far the deck is from the water.
Well, that's, you know, this is the original issue. I was, the addition you're trying to put on is doesn't go out as far as the the deck does.
Right, but I don't know where the water is, where the addition is either. So you know, there's no measurement there to to give me any sense of where the water line is. The diagram doesn't show the doesn't show the shoreline at all. So
No, it doesn't.
And there's no measurements, no, no indication of how far that is. So I guess
Would you mind if I shared it?
I, I really.
Nick, Ed, are you talking about the top right? So I'm following too. Like you, you don't see the distance from there? Or like that one highest corner? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, there's, there's, there's only one measurement to the water.
There.
And that's from the corner of the building, but it's not from the deck itself.
Yeah.
And there's no measurement from where the new structure is.
And then the property line on the bottom right doesn't give a measurement.
And
It only does up top. Yeah.
And then there's also the sideline issued to work. All the measurements shown are at an angle to the property lines. They're not in the shortest distance.
Well, one one issue we had with this is the the lot itself is
Yes, I can see that. But irrespective of the angle of the property lines in relation to the building, the critical measurements are always the closest point to a property line or the closest point to the waterfront, to the shoreline. And particularly in the shoreline zone, that's that that shoreline is the, is the one of the most critical measurements we're looking at. And like I say, there's, there's, there's no there's no measurement from from the deck to the water and also from the new structure. So there's no way for me to judge whether the shoreline is up.
David, oldest holder, I made this drawing. I was helping Tom with it.
Okay.
So I can help you with your question, I think.
Yeah. Maybe you can clarify, but I think what we need in the application though is some accurate representation of what we're dealing with.
And I think you have it if you'd like me to.
Okay.
So if you would, please, this, this is a a representation of, and I'm sorry to have coffee, but that's a representation of the property, as Tom says, it runs in there. Well, low and, he's on low and narrow. So if you see the shoreline, that curved line?
Yes.
Okay. So if you look at the property line, the right-hand side is 243, excuse me, 240 feet to shore. A left one is 153, which is on the plan.
Right, but those, those, those are not relevant to the building at all. So
Okay, let me fix it.
Yeah.
So the hundred and six is, if I understand Tom, hundred and six is to the basically closest to the water. And then the deck goes into that. So that deck is what, four feet? Four feet out.
Well, it's, there's no dimensions of the deck, so I don't.
It would be 102 would be that dimension, 102. And I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
It would be 102 feet from the, the high water. On the right side, you mentioned about the right hand. If you measure from where the proposed garage is, it's 16 feet to the sideline. So Tom's going to be asking for a setback with the appeal for it. So it's 16 foot there. You notice it's nine foot for the existing building in the back. You see the existing called bunkhouse.
Right, it doesn't show, it doesn't show it at the at the closer point to the line and it also
That's the 16 feet.
It's also drawn at an angle to the sideline. So now the 16 foot is, I, I can see it gets a little offset to, to square that, but the bunkhouse, you know, that, that nine foot is not the closest point to the bunkhouse from, at least from looking at this the diagram. So but
What other dimension you want?
Yeah, but, but again, the I, I think one of the critical measurements, again, which is not shown in this, and I don't know if this is part of the application, but there's no dimensions on here really that are well.
So I want to show that to you, show you the relationship of the, the lake.
Right, okay.
And so you understand the property lines?
Right, I, I do, but
I'll take that back.
It, it, you know, it should be in the application showing what, what they're actually doing. And, you know, looking at this, it's merely speculation that it might be outside of the 100-foot line for the new structure. And, and I'm not questioning that, you know, the shore front is angled, but there's nothing on this, nothing else in the application that, that will show us that. That, that's my concern is not that I don't believe that it's okay, only that the application doesn't show it.
Any other questions, sir?
I did have a couple. The one, the one other thing that does particularly concern me, I know oftentimes on Narrows Pond, there's some kind of steep drops on the shoreline and so forth and rocky areas. So how steep a slope do you have between the building, particularly in the area where you're going to be building and the shoreline? And is this going to be difficulty in controlling the erosion on that? Is it really steep? Is it really rocky? Or is it something where the erosion control is going to be able to be installed at?
It is steep. It is. I'm 65 feet up. And it rocks right?
Okay, so it's very steep.
All right, sir. On the right-hand side, looking at this, there is a path that goes down until you're about maybe 25 feet from, from the water, and then I had to put stairs in.
Yeah.
But so it's a little bit more level on the side where we're putting the where we're proposing putting the addition.
Okay.
There is a retaining wall there now.
Other than?
Yes.
That would have been a nice feature to have in the drawing, actually. Is that retaining wall going to be a place or is there plans to do something with that?
That has not been discussed. It is our intention to to leave shore and not put on shore. But it, that has to come into play. I don't think that they're going to need to go as deep as you're suggesting.
Well, I've always asked you because I don't know much about it. And I can only go by what I see here. And it's a little a little slant on details.
Well, I don't I don't put in the request, I thought that.
Well, having just talked here, I think that mic is off. Yeah, I think you got it.
It goes back and forth again.
Now, I think the number one by this time? Oh, I, I didn't think that the request, since I wasn't going any closer to the water than the current building, that I would be an exception from, from the town.
Well, maybe, maybe not. There's nothing on this that shows me that. Other than there's one measurement to the water, which is not you know, is, is not the complete footprint of, of the existing property. So yeah, that's why I managed to.
Yeah, and I can, I can bring that if you want. I can bring it to you.
Ed, why don't, why don't we lay out the improvements we'd like to see on the rendering?
Oh, I, yeah, I think what we need is probably a new cemental for this. And the way it should be set up is the the 100-foot line from the waterfront to the current structures and the proposed structures should be drawn in on the diagram with, with some at least approximate measurements. If all of the new construction is, is outside of the 100-foot mark, then we don't actually even have to approve that as a addition of a non-conforming structure. It's, it's certainly, it's a construction project, and that would be direct moving. We definitely would have to approve for that, but, but not for the actual expansion if it's outside of the 100-foot. But certainly the, the application indicated that some of it at least was non-conforming. And and certainly any new addition couldn't go any closer than what's existing. But again, if we get the dimensions showing that, that's all we need to say.
And again, I may have been, when I was applying for, and I said it was a non-conforming use. Lot is non-conforming. The lot is less than, what's it called, two and a half acres?
Eighty thousand square.
Eighty thousand square feet.
But that's not going to be an issue for you. Your grandfather, there's lots and lots of lots that don't mean builders two acres. So that's not an issue.
Whatever.
Okay, and it may, I think it's non-conforming on some of the sidelines though, actually. So yeah, all right, we'll, we'll read that the non-conforming status. All, but again, look at the short run. I think we, we certainly need to confirm that. And then the sidelines and the frontline measurements need to be determined to the closest point, which I think in some cases they are, and a few other cases they appear they may not be. But
Okay.
And by the way, that applies to the principal structure, what I just said. So you can't take an existing house building and, and see that that's, you know, an even tighter distance to the sideline to the right, like I think you did with the bunkhouse. Bunkhouse, excuse me, and think that that applies to the main building, including the expansion areas. What you're looking for is the existing house and deck where that sits on the lot. Excuse me, the relationships of the land or the bond. So that 106 is fine. So that one oh six is fine, you need to know what it is to the corner of the deck, in that same spot. And probably it would be good to say what the distance from the lake is on, say, the other, the right-hand side existing corner, I think because of the shorefront on that lot, that it will be well outside of a hundred feet, that part of it, because it does sort of jet out.
As a safe assumption.
But, but on the application, you know, if it's one fifteen, just measure it and, and include that on a, an updated diagram would be my thought. Greg, thoughts?
Yeah, I had a lot of the same thoughts as Ed, and me being me, I pulled this up in main parcel viewer and use the measure tool to measure the building and, and the scales are a little off, so, you know, map twenty-five, lot, lot, uh, twenty-three. Um, and, and here, my first concern with the bunkhouse, you know, clearly it's closer to the short, the short slopes, so the actual distance to the shore is not the same, but here, the distance to the back lot, so I think there's a, a little bit of an angle issue. Um, I used the measure tool at the front of the house and I got pretty close to one oh six, I said, close enough for me, but again, you gotta go to the deck, so that's gonna put you to closely to a hundred. I think what really bothered me about this picture is the fact that line's coming in at an angle, I know you're coming in at the property line, but it's like, we really want to know this, the shortest distance to that water, right? So that's really what we want, and as David said, given us both sides of the building makes it really clear to show, hey, the water shoreline, this is the closest point and the water shoreline's going away. So then you're not going to be within that, I think you're close enough that you probably just need to add some extra dimensions. Uh, but I had a couple of extra questions that I thought I probably should ask as well. Um, you know, I wanted to make sure the height is not going to be, I just wanted to double check, the height was not going to be higher than the existing building. Okay, um, and I wanted to check that uh, change to impervious cover. Uh, I don't know what's there now, but I think, you know, if you show, you know, an, an overhead view to say what trees you have to take down, what area you have to clear to make this, to make this addition, I think that's always helpful for us to know.
There is a meaning.
So it's already clear.
It, it's a law right now.
Right, and that's, that's again, that's something very helpful to show us, so, uh, you know, to show us what's there so that we know kind of what you're putting in, you're not taking down any big trees or anything like that, uh, close to the shoreline. So I think those, those things would be, would be helpful. Um, and yeah, as a back, the back property line, I had the same comment, I think David just brought up, I said, you know, whether it's sixteen or fifteen point seven feet or whatever, if you do the straight line math, um, I said, that doesn't matter, you know, the bunkhouses you're showing is nine feet, just because the bunkhouse is non-conforming, we can't, we can't allow you to make the building non-conforming, right? So the, the, the twenty-foot setback still needs to be met, you can go and ask for a variance, but for us, you know, we want that twenty-foot setback to meet our ordinance. Sideline setback is twenty feet.
Right.
Yeah.
But I was not sure.
Well, the bunkhouse's grandfather, that's not part of the main house. So the main house right now is a good thirty-five feet, so you can go up to twenty feet, but you can't go beyond twenty feet because that would increase the amount of non-conformity, if that's even a way to say it, but um, it's a strange, strange grammatical, grammatical term. Uh, but yeah, you be, you know, our, our, our goal is not to increase the amount of non-conformity. So, and that would be increasing it by going beyond that. So if your house, if the building, if the structure itself was only sixteen feet away, you didn't pay with that sixteen feet and you would not increase the non-conformity to the side setback. But because your existing house, the existing main structure is thirty-plus feet, you can't exceed that twenty feet. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It did not, unfortunately.
It does not?
No.
Mr. Chairman? If I may, there is a zoning board application, a variance requested for the agenda a week from today. So they have requested allowances from the required setbacks. The application may be premature because they have, the board has not considered that yet, but someone has an understanding because that application has been made.
Sure. Yeah, anybody can apply to get a variance for many ordinance, that's fine. So, but I'm just saying, for our consideration, we want to make sure to say that that's not ideal for us to approve something because it's outside of what our ordinance says.
Exactly.
So I'm always of the mindset, I would rather see that variance first and then we could approve the whole project, but I don't know the order of operations.
Uh, ZBA has been asked to do it in that order in the past, and they've declined. They want planning board to do their due diligence, and if there's a setback.
So, so, so if you have multiple mics on at the same time, it doesn't feel bad, so if you're not talking, you might want to turn your mic over.
In any event, uh, this concerned the garage for somebody on Memorial Drive that those of us who are here remember specifically because poor Nicole, I, I forget how many times she had to apply, and her garage was gonna be within the uh, the setback in Memorial Drive, so the fact that these guys are trying to be efficient and they've already done a ZBA is fine. Uh, it's just that any approval, once we've got maybe a little more information, presumably, uh, we can put that in as a caveat that, you know, we're approving the uh, uh, conditional permit uh, based on uh, the fact that the setback at sixteen doesn't, doesn't meet the ordinance and that they have, they would have to go ahead and, and get ZBA approved.
Uh, I did have, oh, one other question. Uh, first, well, actually, kind of a two-part. The uh, uh, the drawing shows that bunkhouse, can I assume that is, there's nothing proposed for activity around the bunkhouse?
That's correct.
Okay, um, also on the uh, left side of this sketch, we have there's another uh, another small old building or two connected, I'm not sure which. Uh, and uh, can we assume that there's no changes planned on either of those, well?
There's no change.
Okay, okay, uh, but looking at those, those may well be within the hundred feet, hundred foot line, so you're not planning to do anything with that, that's grandfathered and as long as you're not changing anything there, that's fine, okay. That's all I think.
Greg, do you complete your thoughts?
Yes, okay, done.
Okay, uh, maybe Greg touched on this, but ha- has the total impervious area after this project been calculated? Is it on here? That's, that's really should be on the application also. This is not my application, obviously, but it's me like you're a little under fourteen percent. So if you confirm that that in fact is where you're ending up, um, that won't be an issue. Uh, I believe the ordinance allows twenty, twenty percent?
Yes.
So. Or do we, do we have that, Greg? Did, did you calculate the percent expansion?
It's all, yeah.
Oh, it's all on there?
It's ten percent of waste, it's nine point something, yeah.
Okay.
Total lot minus all the non-permeable areas.
I'm really come there.
Yeah, but the nine point something, like ten percent around it all. Right on the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, I think that should be part of the application, should be included. Um, Rick, I'd ask you, but you're right in the middle of this, so. I don't know that you'll have a question to the applicant, is that it?
No.
Okay, you know what I think? Okay, Greg, you're early for the moment, it's jamming.
Uh, I have the same sort of questions because this was very hard for me to read, um, so I think with more measurement could understand it a little bit better.
Then, let's uh, see if there's anybody here in the audience that would like to join in. Yes, sir.
So, just to remind you folks, our new town manager. And uh, and I want to introduce you to Dawn Emerson, she is our new town planner, she just started on Monday. And I think that she can be of service to this applicant, I mean, it appears to me, listening to your conversation, you don't consider this to be a complete application. So what I might suggest is, you go ahead and table this application, we'll put this gentleman in contact with Dawn and she can help shepherd his, his application uh, to, to complete this to bring back before you, uh, for your consideration. Now, having said that, this item is also on a, as Dawn mentioned, on a zoning board of appeals agenda next week. And actually, and I can, I could be all wrong about this, but I think probably the proper procedure is that you seek the variance first before you get the permit, because without the variance, though, you know, there may well be no permit. And so, uh, and so maybe that, maybe this is gonna work itself out that this gentleman goes to the board of appeals first, if he's granted the variance, then he can bring their application to you, if he's not granted the variance, then he's gonna have to change the, the application around.
You have to be denied by the funding board before you go to the appeal.
But, but my understanding is not for a variance, I mean, that, that's if, that's if someone is appealing a planning board decision, but if they're seeking a variance, then the board of appeals is the, is the board of jurisdiction for that.
On a, on a measurement, agree?
Yeah, on a, on a setback.
I'd be happy to facilitate, getting that a different formation for the board.
It'll be a good way to figure out if the zoning board has changed their mind on the procedure concern, what we can tell. Other than our new town manager and our really, really new town planner, any other questions or comments from the folks? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion, uh, and Jim, I'm not forgetting you, uh, anything that you would like to know on this application?
Dan, do you have any comments?
Someday we'll get it back.
He's not unmuted.
Okay, at this point, it sounds like maybe we're gonna consider a delay, uh, what's everybody's thoughts on a motion?
Pretty good with that?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, so I will make a motion on uh, case twenty-three dash zero three, consideration of a request from Thomas Meiser for a conditional use permit for erasing of more than twenty-five yards within two hundred and fifty feet of lakes for the purpose of expanding an existing non-conforming structure for living space and garage at twenty-seven Rocky, Rocky Hayden Lane on Town Map twenty-five, lot twenty-three. And for the actual structure, I'm just adding that in for the end. Um, be tabled until we have a revised application with the, the board's request, which included uh, additional dimensions and setbacks and if possible, uh, a ver- approved variance and with the, with the uh, impervious surface calculations, um, included in the package, uh, and, and also if possible, the, from the board of appeals.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion from Greg. Seconds from Ed.
Yes, Rick, summarizing before you vote. Just trying to help. But I understand, I, I understand, uh, you want labeled the hundred foot setback, wherever it is, relative to closest point, relative to the lake.
Existing building, yes.
The previous layers, uh, which is that document I showed, you wanted that.
Mm-hmm.
And you wanted the side dimension.
By existing structure, which is the building plus the deck.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
The existing building relative.
Existing structure, which.
What is that measure? And that's from the deck you want, right?
Right, yeah, absolutely.
The deck is the structure, it's always part of it.
And then you wanted the setback from, uh, the closest point relative to the right boundary, is that correct?
All, all of the relevant boundaries, front boundary, side boundary, right, right side, left side doesn't seem to be an issue.
So you're not concerned about the left, shouldn't be an issue, right? So you're concerned about the right setback, what about the front setback?
But, uh, I think it ought to be on there, it's getting, getting close.
What are you looking for for a setback, is that from the edge of the road, is that from the property line, property line?
Property.
I think our ordinance says forty feet, right?
It does.
Can be a hundred, hundred feet from water, it should be twenty feet sidelines, and it should be forty feet from the road. We are hoping that some of those can be adjusted in the future, but they have not yet been adjusted.
Okay, you, you just said two different things, you said the property line and you said the edge of the road, like, you, you calling the property line the right of way?
I believe the ordinance says road.
I, I'm pretty sure it says road, we had that discussion because they timed it.
Travel path, I don't know where.
At, at times the road leaves the actual, the actual.
You're talking about the travel path, yes.
Because the ordinance says road, so we define that as.
Okay, so on this ground, another probably thirty-one feet. So that's the, the number you.
Right. But just realize our ordinance says forty feet.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any other? Correction?
Uh, I'd say no, um, but at thirty-one feet, this one has, this drawing is representative, you're not gonna make the, you're upset any more non-conforming based on what this is presented, so keep, keep that in mind.
Sorry, David, on what you just said.
The ordinance says, uh, you're not in a non-conforming situation. You're not allowed to make it more non-conforming, so that thirty-one feet that you just mentioned is maintained. Or in some cases, it would be nice for it to be better, but you're allowed to keep the thirty-one.
Okay, so let me repeat back what I understand, right now the setback's thirty-five feet. At thirty-one, at thirty-one, that's, that's not an issue, as I was saying. The non-conforming currently is thirty-five.
The non-conforming, whatever it is, is okay.
And if it's less than that, it's okay?
No. End up having anything closer to the road than it is present.
Which it isn't.
Okay.
So I think I have a summary. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, James, James, do you want to, uh?
Yeah.
Any questions for the applicant, sir?
Is that muted?
Yes, yeah, I mean, I, I vote yes.
Jim, you're breaking up pretty badly, I'm not sure what's going on. Mostly I want to make sure that Jim doesn't have something that he also feels could be helpful, um, before we uh, vote on, on the uh, the motion. I see at the end in the public, but we kind of sort into the public thing. Okay.
I'll do a little clarification on the road setback, please. Uh, just a, a quick clarification on the, uh, road setback. The setback of public or private way shall be measured from the edge of the. public or private way shall be measured from the edge of the public right of way or from the edge of a travel portion of a private right of way. So, on a public road, I'm suspecting this is not a public road. It would be property line. On a private road, private right of way, according to the ordinance, it's, it's the edge of the travel way.
Thank you.
And I
That's what we attempted to show here, was that travel, yeah, yeah, travel way.
Okay.
What you described exactly.
Right, because I'm assuming this is not a public road. Okay.
It's dirt.
It's dirty.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seen none? All in favor? Do you still indicate? And Jim, are you in favor?
Yes, I vote yes.
Yeah, he votes yes, yeah.
Okay, so it's seven zero. With Rick's assistance, it sounds like Dawn, you'll hopefully return shortly. And that adjusted diagram will be helpful to your meeting next week as well. Make sure that's clear and crisp. Not kidding, we have tried to do things other than planning board first and CBA second. And to my knowledge, that has not happened. But, but it's time to test them again. Moving by the law. Case twenty-three zero four, consideration of a request from Matthew Steele for a conditional use permit for moving of more than twenty-five cubic yards in the general residential zone for the purpose of building a forty by forty foot garage at sixty-four Pinewood Road on Town Map three seven lot thirty-four. Is someone here for this application? Yes, sir?
Yes.
What about him?
David? I'm Matt Steele, and this is project is a installation for a pad for gravel. I mean, a gravel pad and slab for garage. My understanding for, I knew was moving more than twenty-five yards. Agreed, yes. Thank you for, for coming. Want to start with Greg?
I just had, I thought a fairly simple question. Just, you said two hundred and fifty yards, and if you checked the box, I just wanted to double check that none of the materials leaving the site, you're just reworking the area?
Yeah, that's correct, Greg. So, is there some topsoil that's going to come off a lawn type area? And we'll stop all that or finish long and see where it is.
That was my only question. Thank you.
Mr. Bedding, you?
I had basically kind of a comment along that same line. With two hundred and fifty yards being replaced on the lot, it sounds like it's going to be a fair amount of disturbed area. The only comment I had, although this is not in the shoreline zone, it's not a long way from Raina Creek. It's just need to make sure that it'd be very diligent on the erosion control and stabilization of the disturbed area to avoid a run off to the lake. That's all I had.
Appreciate your comment. Rick, any thought, any questions to the applicant? You're good, Ms. Betty?
I'm sorry. If I understood it right, is that, is that a creed area where you to your right of your driveway?
Yes.
So there's some, there's some trees you can cut there.
Yes, sir.
But it is that wooded area, right?
Yes.
And you're right about the one we just approved. Shortly, the, the garage behind the house on Pomorrow Drive?
Yeah.
Yes, she's right up behind there.
Thank you for that. Ms. Betty? Mr. Aaron? You're good, you're good? Good. Dawn, you're good?
I just have one question. Maybe you guys can help clarify for me. Up on the top side of the garage, it says a forty-six foot setback. I'm assuming this is not to scale, or am I reading this incorrectly? Because the existing house is fifty feet. So how could this be forty-six? Am I reading that wrong?
I was just assuming not to scale. Because it, it wouldn't make any sense.
Okay.
Otherwise.
I can give you a quick little explanation if you're unsatisfied.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it's applied to it, I'm just, I, I just.
But if you, if you look over the left-hand side of the sketch.
Yes.
See that little, that little as you run along the back line, and then that drops back in again?
Yeah.
So there's, so there's a, the back line steps back in on that side.
Okay.
It's not a constant line.
Okay.
Always constant.
Gotcha, okay.
To, to, to the point, it's, it's well within.
Okay.
Yep.
Very cool. That's all I have. I'm going to ask Jim.
Yes, please.
Jim, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Jim. Let's report it up to the public. Anyone here this evening who has a comment on this application? Okay, once again, seeing none, we'll close the public portion, and one is the pleasure of the board.
I'm in favor.
Thank you, Jim. Let's do the motion, though. Please, somebody?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make motion. I move that case by three dash four, consideration request from Matthew Steele for conditional use permit for moving of more than twenty-five cubic yards in the general residential zone for the purpose of building a forty by forty garage sixty-four Pinewood Road on Town Map thirty-seven lot thirty-four, be approved as presented.
I'll second.
It's good to know that Jamie's mic is working. We have a motion from Ed, a second from Jamie. If there are no other questions, all those in favor, so anyone here? Yeah, Jim, Jim voted in the affirmative. Other than other than getting the usual permit from Bart, you're good to go, sir. Thank you, we tie. Okay, the last item that we have in here, other business, is we have an informal discussion with our friend Joel about qualities and gravities. I guess, Dawn, your, your alternate with the shorter hair is going to take your spot. That's okay. Joel, what's yours?
I agree with much. Okay, so I took the liberty of just preparing an initial very, you know, I've worked just basically a draft of everything that I thought might be needing, need to be in such an ordinance, so this can be a starting point for everyone to work off. That seems, you know, I'm making the presumption that that's a good start. I did get a little bit of feedback from the, one of the council meetings about what might need to be included. I think most of it would be included in this, but of course, all this is open to you know, tweaks and changes and full-on feedback exceptions as needed. I guess, I mean, I, I would, at this point, it would be nice to just get some general feedback about what the a, the goals are of this ordinance specifically, and then what process we might want to go in, and how we do it. We use this as a, obviously, I don't expect you to read through everything now, but we could, you know, I could provide an, an electronic version of this, which everyone has access to to make comments on. Everyone can happily scribble on a hard copy and send it to me, and then I could incorporate those comments, so. So I guess before, I guess the two things I wanted to go away from tonight is, you know, just get some general sense of what we're trying to achieve on this, and what the reasons are for it, so that we can make sure we satisfy the, the purpose and need of creating this ordinance. And then also just, you know, about what would work best for you as a board, and how we go about constructiveness. And I'm hoping this, you know, this draft template is a good, good starting base to build off. So I'll, I'll see what you guys think about that.
I have a basic question for you, sir. If we took a poll of the folks with us this evening, and perhaps as a segment of the town, there would be a desire to not have certain activities in the, in the town of Winthrop. So my question for you is this. Can we not allow certain types of activity?
The simple answer is no. You can't ban anything outright. You can, using the, actually, that is another point that comes up, is how this integrated the zoning ordinance. You can allow certain uses in different zones. So you can, you can disallow certain activities in certain zones. That is legal, as long as it's potentially allowed in, in some areas of town. And then also, you can regulate the, those uses rather reasonably strongly, so that it makes it that those uses don't, hopefully don't have any negative impacts on the town as a whole, the environment of us, and so on. But you can't outright ban a, a legal uh, le, legal use. But you can regulate where it might happen, in terms of which zones it's allowed, and potentially, you know, a buffer from other adjacent uses. And then also, you can regulate the standards that it would have to meet in order to operate in those locations that are left to be allowed. So in, in theory, you can make it quite difficult and owners, for want of a better word, for a, a, a certain operations happen, but you can't outright prevent it from operating in town. Well, unbelievable.
There's a, a recent article that suggested that there are four food additives that will no longer be allowed in the beautiful left coast state of California. You're saying we can't go ahead and do something similar with, with this use?
No, you can't, you can't le, you can't legally ban, uh, uh, you can't, you can't ban illegal you, land use, uh, for someone who owns private property to, to, to have a certain use on that land unless it's, you know, criminally illegal. You can't, you can't civilly prevent it from happening. You can regulate that. You can say that in certain areas of town, but you can't outright ban it.
And by the way, this, this obviously is going to be fairly informal. Let's try to focus on part one, which is what, what the objective of the ordinance is. Ms. Betty, your turn.
Just to, to go back a little bit on to this. So we can't ban it totally, but we could say that particular area or area around X number of houses would forgive it that?
Yeah, one of the first things to do, aside from granting new ordinance, is using the zoning ordinance, is incorporate certain uses, you know, whether it be mineral extraction, gravel bits, whatever we end up figuring out it has to be. And you lot, you incorporate that into your table of uses to say this is not allowed in residential zones. This is not allowed in so you'll probably end up maybe just saying it's allowed in whatever zones it is. But then you can also perhaps, within the further ordinance, to say, even within those zones that it's allowed, it might have to be, you know, however many feet away from other uses that it might cause an incompatibility problem. So say it's allowed in the rural, rural zone generally. You would say, well, okay, well, it's not allowed. And I'm just picking numbers that, yeah, that is not, so you can say it's not allowed within five hundred feet of a property line that's residentially used. So you can respect it in quite a lot of ways, but you just can't outright prevent it completely.
Thank you.
It's a little bit, uh, the, I'm going to call it the setback for this activity on neighboring properties. You say five hundred. If we take a vote in the room, the answer will probably be, I don't know, five thousand?
I think, I think what, what you might have to do is is whatever, we could do some land use analysis. We could map out what that might look like, if we say a thousand feet from whatever, and if it's going to leave some reasonable space that if someone was really wanting to do this operation, there's, at least kind of land uses in town, that was technically somewhere it could happen. If it's, if, if you say it's, you know, five thousand feet from this, that affect, that, that constitution affected by it because there's nowhere that that would be possible. So it'd have to pass a scrape phase test in that sense. I mean, it could be, it could be legally challenged at that point, so. We can, once we get into that, we could perhaps do some analysis from whatever we say, whether we'd be, you know, however many feet from and you can do it potentially from property lines. You can do it potentially from the edge of that full residential structures or whatever it might be, but we'd have to look at what that constitutes and see if that was reasonable. If it, you know, if it leaves only like a post-disaster stamp that is only possible in town, I think that would probably not be a safe button legally for a regulation.
Thank you. Other questions, just on the overall objective of this, Greg?
Yeah, I just, I mean, just right at the number two, your purpose. You know, one of the second purpose is, you know, I, I see the first one, conserving, protecting, and serving water ground law quality. You know, I think there's personally some gaps in the state ordinance, so I don't, I don't have a problem adding something to that. But number two is like preserving the value of property. That is an incredibly hard stick to be measured by. It's very subjective, and so is, you know, E, protecting the scenic quality of Winthrop. Some people would say, well, I don't want to see it. Well, does that mean they need to have a wooded buffer, and that it has to be on a hill, or something that nobody can see? So those are very subjective types of measures. Are there, are there, so I'm just kind of talking ten thousand foot view, sort of like from a purpose, are there measures for those in, in this document? Is there something the state might have, or somebody providing to say, how do you evaluate? You know, we're not realtors. We're not going to be able to evaluate a property, or how, how do we measure these things that are very subjective?
Excellent point, yeah. I mean, it, you're right, it all comes down to subjective things at the end of the day. What, what you can do is is the, as comfortable as you can be as far to provide the information that makes you hopefully make a subjective decision that's based on good information. And you can really, you can go down, you can have visual impact assessments, which are are, you know, there's, there's certain ways to potentially quantify things, but it also it is, it's going to be subjective at the end of the day. And then also, you can potentially do, you know, real estate reports on, on, on numbers, but again, those are also somewhat subjective and also very fluid. So you're right, it is only, I mean, most of, most of the regulation for things like this is going to be a subjective decision, and that's why there's a, there's many people on board, and you got a majority decision. But the thing is, the thing I would stress is that the, the board makes sure that it gets the information from an application in order for, for the board to feel comfortable about making that subjective decision. from an application in order for, for the board to feel comfortable about making that subjective decision. So if you do require, um, like a, a, a study into the potential property values, then that's fair enough. If that's what you feel you need to have to make those decisions, that's understandable. And the same with a visual impact assessment, they can provide what it might look like from certain vantage points, and what it would look like before and after, and where it can be seen from. It all helps you make a decision. So it is, you're right, it's all subjective, but it's all about getting as much information so that people making that decision, that subjective decision, feel comfortable in it, based on as much information as they get.
Okay, thank you. But, uh, okay, okay. Dylan? Jamie?
Yep, no, Chris Momen.
Betty wanted to, another girl.
Remember the Assuring Protection of Wildlife and Wildlife Habitat, it's pretty hard not to find some wildlife in this town. I mean, I can look out my back and window and, and saw two deer today, and deer, not birds, um. So that one could almost fit any situation in, in this town. Would that, if, if we used, if that was used to object to it, would that legally look like we're doing something, you know, I mean, because the whole town's that way?
Yeah, no, I think that.
Oh, maybe downtown, I don't know. The last place they walked downtown, I don't know if the most like downtown here.
No, no, I mean, it's a good point. I mean, there's, there's, there's certainly, you know, a lot of data and information formally out there, which is, which is, uh, you know, completely bulletproof. That does, you know, you can hopefully map out what, what is considered, you know, for example, by the state to be high level habitat and things like that, um. You know, just like, just like any other decision of a large development of any kind, um, you usually have to do with environmental, um, due challenges to make sure that, you know, filling in a wetland, a sensitive wetland, or taking out a large deal wintering area, the cost you've got, you've always going to have, um, effects on wildlife that even if it was in an area that's not like mapped or flagged to be a special wildlife area, you're still going to have effects on wildlife if you if you just, you know, change a, a large, large piece of land from one thing to another, it's going to have an effect. Again, that's, that's one of the things that the board has to take a decision on, and usually try and make a decision on as much data as you can get, so. Understanding point though, I mean, if this if, if there's enough information to say that there's going to be known effects on wildlife, then that gives the board an opportunity to deny an application based on that, but you have to have the kind of proof to say.
So I read about where it was placed up there in the year gap or?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the, and then if there's, you know, if there's particular concerns and there's a, there's some kind of study that's either already exists or can be done that says i- i- it wouldn't be affecting something, then you have to have that kind of evidence to try and, evidence-based decision-making to try and potentially, you know, wrap it up.
All right, before we let folks, Jamie?
Sorry.
Just one more, I'm sure.
That's it, just one more. Did you, um, just because I'm just not sure how you come to put this together, which is a great starting point. Do you, have you looked, is this from like other towns and other ordinances that you like believe this information and use? And do you recommend any certain town ordinance that we perhaps review to help incorporate other ideas? Or is that basically already here?
Yeah, that is, this is one that I actually put together myself a few years ago now, um, based on an amalgamation of considered best practices, various of the communities that have used it. Um, so it is like my amalgamation of what I saw in the best of other ordinances that other communities use.
Okay.
Um, you know, and so that's, that's why I created this from, and it's, it's kind of like, it, it's like a full sweep of everything I can think of, which doesn't mean that we can't already add stuff to it. But I think it's, I mean, you can see along it, it's fairly comprehensive. There might be some, um, things in there that are actually already covered in the zoning ordinance, so we've removed duplication. But it is my best effort of putting together the most comprehensive kind of, um.
Yeah, there's a new boy's.
Has anybody adopted that?
Yeah.
Has anybody used it or?
Um, the, uh, off the top of my head, this, this has written, I don't, like I say, it's, it's, it's been kind of compiled and amalgamated by myself, so this has written, I don't think is, is enforced exactly from another community, but all the stuff in there has come from pre-existing ordinances, um, you know, best practice. So this in itself is probably not exactly what's being.
But.
But there's various, there's several other communities that, you know, um, and I can go away and, and go back and find out where I got all the information from. But it is all come from pre-existing, communities that already have these regulations.
So they've got them in place in, in their town ordinance?
Oh, yeah, several, I mean, there's several towns around the state that have these, um, mineral extraction law ordinances that are broadly similar to this.
All right, your second question of us, uh, and that's not of the folks, is how we want to go with the homework of, of going through it, coming up with s- suggested additions or deletions, uh, adjustments, and most importantly, do we send everything to Anthony because he doesn't have enough to do? Or conversely, do we scare Dawn and send everything to Dawn?
Well, also does that, no.
Uh, well. But I would recommend that sending it directly to Joel is probably not a, a best practice.
I liked how we did the solar ordinance and we said, because had track changes on it. I don't know if everybody's comfortable doing it that way, or if everybody goes separately and then sent their comments that they're not comfortable doing it that way online?
And I'm also not progressed to, to being the, uh, that everyone sent it over to me, I'm used to that, and I can usually just to keep, keep track of everything, uh, but also, like I say, I can make a electronic, online version available that is, that will track changes and take comments, um, that. But if, but if someone wants to send me something, you know, notes scribbled on the back of a post-it note, or actual handwritten notes on this, I would be happy to, you know, take those and add those to the, to the changes as well, just so we can track.
Okay, Joel, you just volunteered. Okay.
Tell me if.
Question, you'll keep electronic copy online and you'll put everybody's comments on there? Is that the way you'll do it?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then we can like say. Before you change it.
Yeah, we'll show, obviously, which changes suggested, so, you know, I won't be agreed on.
I, I do one question of Joel. I hope I know the answer. Assure me that this proposal here does include all of the minimum requirements by the state?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I mean, um, instead, I mean, the, 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 those are going to, whatever, whatever regulation the town is up with, the end of this, um, the state is still going to require any permits they require anyway. So nothing's going to get missed. Um, and I thought, usually one of the, one of the requirements of an ordinance like this is, is that we have copies of the state's ground next to all of this kind of thing anyway, so.
All right.
It, it usually will go and go beyond what the state requires.
One, one way or another, we want to make sure the state's included.
Yeah, we can, we'll win it by the D E P at least.
Okay. Any thoughts from, uh, the folks? I think your name has been.
Good race.
As long, as long as your first name is not Theo.
Well, thank you, uh, I'm not quite prepared, we're, we're a long list of comments, but, uh, I guess what I'd like to see is the, uh, you know, or understand what the timeline's going to look like, and when can we participate in the comment period? I mean, this was handed out tonight, and, and none of us have any idea what's in it. Again, we understand it's probably very comprehensive, it includes, you know, the kitchen sink, but, uh, we.
We haven't seen one either.
Yeah, we, we haven't seen it either.
Oh, I know why of that, I do, yeah. So we're, we're kind of, we're kind of bright and blindsided here by, by not having, you know, a, a copy of it to make comments on it. So I, I'm hoping that there's going to be a, a, a period of time for much more, um, thoughtful public comment, uh, before a final draft is presented, uh, to you folks. I guess that's, that's my, that's the one thing I would like to see or hear from the planning board tonight. Thank you. I think the timeline will depend on how quickly we get back to Joel, number one. Number two, once we have a draft that we think is reasonable and covers our thoughts, then we'll bring it up in a future planning board meeting. And everybody will be, you know, made aware of that. Uh, and then secondly, just keep in mind that, that if we find something we're comfortable with, it goes to town council, and they're going to do two public readings, uh, thereafter, before anything becomes real. Uh, as far as input, I'm changing the subject a little bit on the comp plan. Anthony, should we at some point consider having it available through the website, like we're done with the comp plan?
Yeah, absolutely. I was going to suggest that very thing. Uh, I'm sure Joel will be happy to give us a, uh, uh, a copy of the work product that he has here tonight. We'd be happy to distribute that to, to Gil and all the folks along, uh, Turkey Lane, post it on the website. And that way, you know, we can solicit some, some input from the public as well, and so as not overload Joel, maybe that could go to Dawn, and then Dawn can filter that, uh, to Joel. One of the things that is really critical, as you folks may know, is our moratorium actually expires on October the first, and so on, September twenty-fifth, we're going to make a second run at the town council for getting the moratorium extended, but it will be extended by six months. And Joel has previously estimated that this process is going to take forty-five months, Joel? Is that, is that still your best guess?
I would hope so. I would hope it didn't go too much longer.
Okay.
In terms of crafting a final version, if there's a lot of feedback and wanting changes, uh, might take us a lot longer, but I, oh, yeah, that's, that's.
And I think, I think we could barely assume there'll be a lot of feedback from the community on this. And so in order to land this plane on time, something that we may want to consider is A, having some sort of discussion of this on each of your agendas the next four to five months. Or B, something that Dawn just whispered in my ear is maybe we have two meetings a, a month, as you currently do, but one of them is for you to make decisions on applications, and the other one is a strictly workshop meeting, uh, that is very important, dedicated, uh, to this issue, and so that you might be able to spend a good two, two plus hours on this, uh, each month. So I, I'm just assuming with the amount of input that we're going to get from the public, um, I'm hopeful we get it done in four to five months, but we definitely have to get it done within six months, right? In order to, 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 to get it done before the moratorium expires.
Thank you. Oh, we seem to refuse these before we're going to say.
I was just going to piggyback off this.
Back to the line, Gil.
Good evening, everybody. Steve, I mean, uh, one of the things that comes to mind when we think about meaningful community engagement and a timeline and a process is that it, the best way to be most efficient, or one way to be most efficient at the time may not be to have you wrapped up what your responses may be and come up with a draft that does not incorporate what community feedback may be. When this came in from the town council, one of the things I was talking about was a meaningful community engagement process. And it doesn't sound like there will be an opportunity, excuse me, for meaningful community engagement if you redraft this and not take into consideration the community's perspective before redrafting. So is there the opportunity for the community to, to see the template? Provide input, then have a new draft, uh, you know, version B put up? Have that, uh, brought back and then brought forward, thinking of meaningful community engagement. Thank you so much.
I believe see that as what Anthony was proposing. Having our soon to be retired Ms. Dawn be the person that will receive ideas and inputs and so on and so forth. Um, so that we don't inundate Joel, but then secondarily, Anthony also said it will get the template up on the website, so it is.
Right, I just wanted to highlight the distinction rather than your team working on a draft while receiving feedback and having those two processes going on in parallel, and potentially having that feedback not incorporated, which then creates this process of three drafts going on at the same time. So just wanted to highlight the, the slight distinction of ordering them and stating them in a, in a way that incorporates the feedback in a meaningful, community-oriented fashion.
We let you take the whole thing over.
We hired and contracted a wonderful student.
Hi, Steve Robbins. Um, I can talk about Crest Rock for a while, but I'll try to keep this spot pretty brief, um. I'm in a butter, um, up there, um, on Turkey Lane. We have almost a mile of common land, uh, boundary between the quarry and our property. Um, but, uh, Crest Rock is not dangerous. It's not your enemy, it's your friend. If you want to do build a house, you want pour concrete, you want to paint your driveway, you want a dry basement, I can go on and on about the uses of Crest Rock, but let's talk about a second, but I want, I want the, like the board to do it. Take a look at reality. Where's the Crest Rock come from? Well, you've got, uh, the St. Laurent pit down in, uh, Sebastian, way behind the town office, plenty of houses around it, they blast, they crush in that pit. Um, you've got, um, the, um, McGee pit in Augusta, Corin, blasting around the side of the Kendrick River. Um, and they make Crest Rock all, all day long, they blast it. Not that blast, they don't blast all the time actually, because blasting is very limited, but, uh, and how about the, uh, pipe pit up in Sidney? Now, I would invite you to look at Google Earth on some of these things, because there's about a hundred and fifty houses a quarter of a mile of the pipe pit up there at Sid, Sid, Sidney exit. I don't think that, I don't think you'll find that the house that's quarter mile from that pit is any less valuable than the one that's a mile from that quarry operation. So, let's see, where else does it come from? Bowden Center, uh, there's, they're blasting and crushing right there at Bowden Center, right behind Bowden Center's door. Uh, a few, two days ago, I was sitting at the intersection down at, um, um, the Tops and Pan Mall, some of the most valuable property in mid-coast Maine is the Tops and Pan Mall. Right across the street is Cook, is Perka. If you sit in that light, which I did twice in the last month, one of them was two days ago, and the, the Holland Rock, I heard it's coming from Poland, they drive it into that facility right across from the Tops and Pan Mall, and they made Crest Rock, and it's sold to D E P, not V E P, D O T, um, and local contractors. If you think the world can go without Crest Rock, it's not going to happen. We need all the Crest Rock we get. If you look at the project that they just did at the school, look at all the Crest Rock they put on that rep rate bank. You know where that came from? It came from the quarry in Augusta, McGee's Port. So before you enter into some sort of radical ordinance that is going to restrict some operations that have been going on on that property, on that street for generations, frankly, um, you know, take a look at reality, take a look at Google Earth, and see, and look at the sites that I've mentioned, see the amount of residential homes that are around there. No one's dying. The Perka operation, take a look where Mount Air Rat High School, that's two thousand feet away. The middle school is right there, and the elementary school is right there. They're all right there. And you know, you can go across the street and you can shop at Hanaford. I don't know anybody that's, doesn't shop at Hanaford, it cooks for them because of the danger of Crest Rock. It's just, just, it's not a reality, frankly. Anyway, thanks.
Yes, we're going to do a brief round two. I was using the word read. And I do want to piggyback on, on Anthony's statement, even though the moratorium runs out in, in six months, this ordinance process doesn't end in six months. If it goes month over, we're still working towards the goal of getting an ordinance in place. So, you know, and as much as I would like to see another six-month extension, realizing that that's not possible. I think it's, it's only one year, uh, a moratorium, so. Uh, let's, let's not feel pressured. To put out a document without getting it right. Uh and I'm not gonna address any of the previous uh statements, but. Thank you very much for your for your time this evening. That's pretty much it on moratorium. Leading to ordinance and what that's gonna look like exactly, you don't know. But you all will be able to see it on the website this week.
Assuming Joel gets it to tomorrow.
I will send it you when I set that back down with my laptop right now.
All right. If that's the case, then yes.
So we'll be your PDF file presumably um on, went through main.org, I'd say by Friday. Uh again, you, Anthony, Dawn may need a multi-line phone. But once everybody has thoughts on it, absolutely you should share, share directly with Dawn. Uh Joel will make sure that everybody's feelings get folded and and uh. Invented or adjusted, uh you know, or whatever uh as needed. So we're sort of at the beginning of a trip that's happened the last three, four, five months, if I had to guess. Everybody okay at the moment? Do we have, yes, Dawn?
I have a few parts here. Any more on site contact information?
I have a question. Are we going to be using a part of our meeting or a meeting to discuss this? On monthly basis? Have we decided or?
For Anthony was threatening us with two meetings every month and probably the second meeting would be um. Uh ordinance based, at least for now, preliminarily, I think that's what we're thinking.
Is there, is there like a legal aspect where somebody applies that they have to, that they get to have their case heard in a certain amount of time?
No.
No, okay.
If there's a moratorium, there's a moratorium.
Okay. No, I don't mean for gravel pits. I mean in general, like are we allowed to take one meeting a month? Where we don't hear cases and just talk about the moratorium?
No, I believe it's it's actually in the ordinance and I wanna say it's gonna be like thirty days.
Okay.
If someone applies, we at least have gotta decide that it's either uh a complete application and therefore address it. Or conversely, the one that we have probably is to say that it's it's not complete enough for us. For some reason, but that probably would be a dawn role.
Okay.
Going forward, I believe.
But I would, I would suggest that if we're going to do that and that we would perhaps not go through the whole thing, maybe take parts of it. So that the week we come, we're gonna do some or a certain part and not we have this one by doing one and this one doing another. I would be like sitting here going, what? Uh you know what I'm saying? Do section whatever to whatever.
I I think when you go through it, um it's it's really one program, but but at this point, I'm not gonna second guess. If we have to parcel it or not.
Let's say that the convenience, the convenience and for the sake that we have to agree with, if we have to hear a case. We know we only have to go fifteen pages or something we decided to do that week, that we're going to be in order. Of what we're doing.
I don't think that you're right. I don't think that you're wrong. I think. And we'll go after sort of the first run through.
Okay.
At that point, we'll see if it's, you know, sort of a comprehensive. Thing that that we're just tweaking the edges or or whatever, or if we have to boil it down to smaller chunks. I don't know the answer yet. But we'll do, we'll do whatever works out best for everybody. Okay?
Guys, one more thing?
Always one more thing to do.
So sort of for Joel, so when he gets comments from Dawn that the public wants to input, you'll you'll like kind of put those in his track changes as well so that we'll see.
Yeah, well, I know, hopefully the relevant section that they're intending to put notes in that.
Okay.
So that.
Gotcha. Okay, so we'll be able to see the public and the boards all together as we're going here.
And may I did always. And so as not to create any sort of uh false sense of expectation. You know, we have two professional planners here now working in tandem on this. And if we get comments from the from the public, they'll incorporate it if if appropriate, you know? And so there may be some things that would be suggested by the uh by the public that may not actually be appropriate for the ordinance. And and so when you look at what you're trying to accomplish, I mean, one, I think you obviously wanna regulate this activity, right? I would say your second purpose is don't get the towns. And so, and so, um you know, if someone suggests something that that might lead to that. Then I mean, I think we're gonna be relying on these two professionals here to 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 say, you know, this isn't worth putting into the into the track changes. So so I just wanna, I just wanna set a bar of expectation that not everything that's suggested will be forward.
My probably for landing what I might add, so you know, keep that in mind. It could get a bit crazy. All right, everybody looks like they're okay. Do we have any other business? Another seat?
No.
Quick update. Sure, signed Dawn and I and Joel to do update of comparing the maps. Zoning maps to the digital copy. Yes, we've completed that task.
Wow.
Joel has all that feedback. A joyal could need help with where you're at with the finalization. If the path forwarders to put it on on site, right, on the digital site.
Yes, I just wanna thank you and Dawn for your diligence, for a lot of efforts and effort into that. So now we should, uh I'm just gonna tweak a few little things and combine everything into one unified database. But now we have a full digital zoning, accurate digital zoning um layout, which. We have and I believe we've talked about how to. Incorporate that with the assessed parcel so that we can now. You know, you click on that parcel, it tells you which zone it is, and then we can incorporate all the other assessing information as well. Um I will, once I finish the tweaks, I'll send a link to that by our digital version for. You know, for review and for use as needed, so.
That was really the next step. What is the next step?
Uh once I finalize the thing, I'll send you the link and then we'll, you'll literally have the the digital map that you can go in and. Zoom in and interrogate and then I kind of, as a part B, I believe we were talking about trying to incorporate that with assessing information on the parcel. But that's kind of.
That was accessible on the website, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, what what we do at the moment is we post that information. Just separately through our geographic information system on behalf of the town. And it's just a separate link which you can go in and look at at any point and interrogate with no heading, so.
It's like any Google map. You click on the list that he provides and it'll magically.
And you can zoom in.
So the complete comparison will be complete, available for feedback if there's specific issues.
Absolutely, yeah.
Are we still doing that on the website?
Uh what now?
Remember we spoke about um people in the town would have access to it if there was any changes or any inaccurate information?
I think we're gonna review it and see if we're comfortable next.
Okay.
Uh.
What does that mean?
Yeah, there was.
It'll be a future agenda item.
Essentially, what we, what we worked on was um making sure that the the zoning. Districts from the existing big paper tax maps were accurate to the digital one, but there's also, you know, the. Some of the changes that haven't been reflected on those old panel maps, so I think those need to be reconciled.
I think the the changes, as I recall, were relatively few. Um I think maybe there were some spots that the thought would be that. It was in the middle of an otherwise residential area, but there were a couple of outliers, kind of that's the thing. So those in fact have sort of been patched and fixed and so forth.
Right.
Uh. But. This, again, will be something that once you got a chance to look at it. We'll decide if we're comfortable. We'll do that during the meetings so everybody can join in. Um I don't know, Joel, if. We drive a list of twenty-three people that we're gonna propose go from uh. Urban to presidential kind of a thing. I I I don't know that answer on the changes. To Rick's, to Rick's thought, if you wanna let people know if if the zoning is actually gonna change, switch it again.
Well, I think it's, it's gonna be all scale, full-on zoning changes, which I believe. The what, I mean, I think one of the main things for some of those commercial corridors, they might change it to the. Um the commercial zone on the two hundred corridors, the main stuff we do.
Yes.
I mean, any of those make significant zoning changes would have to go through. Just in light, you're gonna amend or not, it has to go through the process of the.
Oh, yes, yes.
So so, you know, but the the nice thing is that if we have that, you know, that proposed version and we have that website link. Someone who's interested in that property can go and zoom zoom in to where they are and it'll show you where the the property, where the uh the zone. Those lie on that property or are down, so.
I think the issue was that the the paper version was all in it. Well, you know, you and Dawn know better than the rest of us.
For sure.
Yeah, there may, may have been occasional inconsistencies. And, you know, on on the zoning on individual parcels. So if that's been sort of aggregated and made more sensible, uh.
The best description would be we took the maps, looked at what was digitized and said, we need to go fix the digital to match the map. And those are where they intersected the properties ma- major. I mean, that's most most of what we did. And the second one was where we combined zones.
Yes.
And the third one would be where we had um. Uh. What's the right term? The the setbacks or water, two hundred and fifty foot setback and.
Overlays.
Overlays and uh zones that were um. A different, different classification, like showland zoning versus uh white land protection. Those areas we defined and changed on the digital copy, so they match.
Good.
And so I think we've covered all the bases. I think to me, the only question mark now is, does it look right overall? Uh other than doing the same work we did, I'm not sure what more detail work can be do. Second thing that in question, I said it before, is. Having the opportunity for someone to look at it and say, that's my property and that ain't right. Or what is that? Uh for me, that's the the step that's gonna have to happen with the public innovation with that digital map.
And in fact. You've got the digital version to conform with the paper version. There is no change.
Well, it is not perfect in the sense that um the delineate, for example, the showlands are on this building, they're gonna be the main points. The delineation of where the two hundred feet is is automatically generated on the digital ones based on the where the. The water resources are defined, so it's, you know, it's indicative of all means.
The digital is what you're saying, the digital is more accurate than what the map was.
Well, neither neither might be accurate. The the old point is, is it gives you an idea roughly of where your two hundred and fifty feet is from the water line. But those would always have to be verified on the ground, uh to to say you're truly within the showland. So but that goes without saying for all of that, yes.
Right, so all you're gonna do is redo all the tax parcels for the entire town and review it.
Well, a lot of the the paper maps, somebody just went in there, drew them in, we can, and we tried to.
And Mike had to help us interpret.
The line itself, it's probably twenty feet.
Mike had to help us interpret subtleties, as Dawn describing the setback from two oh two and such. Uh Mike had to help us with that.
Was the digital party started off with satellite imagery?
Um we did, we did reference the satellite imagery in many cases just to see where we were dealing with. But it's based on the, you know, the the general state information about outline and things like that, but we did, we did look at the satellite imagery here and that. It probably doesn't conform with accurately all the way around town, but that again, that's. That's for the whole thing, especially with the ways, you know, specific buffers around specific things that always, we would always have to be verified on the ground. To get a true reading, those.
I guess we're looking for the next step.
Uh next step is Joel's gonna finish up. Let us know, send us a link and we'll be able to look at it. And will that is a future item on the agenda.
And will that link be posted on the town website? What if the public wants? I've talked about once, it's.
Uh but you, I guess my answer is if we can link it, why not? And it'll still be on there and certain, but.
Yeah, that's no problem. As long as it's, you know, where it is.
Public information.
Provisional and not yet fully confirmed, but obviously it should be back for coming up, people see something that they.
We're actually, we're performing to the updated ordinance we sent in uh twenty nineteen. No, we, that's when we did the zoning adjustment, solidations.
And we incorporated all that.
Okay, so that that will be reflective of something that's already been approved.
But we would still go through the process.
Yeah.
Or making sure we're comfortable and then reporting it up to council. Uh you know, it's separate and apart of us if you wanna do that. Make everybody happy.
Thank you.
No, we have a few minutes. I'm I'm talking written minutes. I'm not suggesting we're getting out of here, so. Thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
First one is the meeting on July twenty-sixth. Any questions or comments? Here in the year two four, that region fellow's gone away and Rick is in a contagious place, just you know. We had a meeting on August ninth. My only question is, Jim was uh with us tonight, obviously. Uh I thought he was also here on this particular meeting.
I don't know, cause I wasn't here.
Yes.
I had to use the um.
The transcription.
Yeah, but I couldn't tell if Jim was there or not.
Is anybody who was here remember?
Jim is no longer on, so I can't ask him.
Then I guess we move on to the last one for the evening, which is August twenty-three. Any questions and comments other than that? Richard Guy should be ready.
Why is that one calm something else?
Yeah, you do.
I didn't have any issues. Everybody else okay?
I'm good.
Uh anybody wanna make a motion concerning minutes for these three days?
We have all three days of minute as written. You wanna, I can add the dates in the.
No, so noted. Second?
Second.
All right, edits, Ed says, well, people agree, agrees, all in favor? Well, it's at least a six oh and kind of seven oh. Give it to James. Any other business?
May I, Mr. Chair? I just have one request.
Yeah, which Jamie always tells us, right?
One last thing, one more thing. So, ladies, gentlemen, I am not too proud to beg. So please, 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 we need your feedback on the future land use chapter of the comprehensive plan, particularly as it relates to the designated growth area. So I've now twice sent you the questions that Jessica Cobb and Trudy Carrick has posed to you. Uh including on Monday, I said that on Monday, but but what we need is your thoughts as to whether or not the designated growth area should be expanded. Or if it is good as it is, as as it stands, and her questions again are in the email that I sent to you on. And her questions again are in the email that I sent to you on, on Monday. But, uh, as, as I think I've expressed before, the future land use chapter of that plan is really critical to the plan and, and a lot of regards to the heartbeat, uh, of that plan. And so that's a, that's a critical question, whether or not we're satisfied with the designated growth area as it currently stands or whether or not we think it should be expanded. And in an email, I think earlier today, we laid out some, some potential options for that. Uh, I think there was a concern about expanding it to include the totality of the general residential zone, which is something, uh, one option that Jessica K E, just because a lot of that area is not served by public water and sewer. So that may be problematic. Um, but, and so, you know, one idea, and I sent around some maps about this today, is that we could make the designated, uh, zone, any, or growth area, any zone that is served by, uh, public water and sewer. And so, and that lends some flexibility to the plan. So if that infrastructure is ever extended or expanded, then, you know, that automatically becomes part of the designated growth area as well. So, so please, uh, if you could, I'd end it next weekend, absolutely. We need your, we need some guidance and your feedback as to, as to what the designated growth area should be.
And what if we disagree?
Disagree with what Jamie, one more question.
Our thoughts on designated growth areas, I'll raise my hand. We're, we're okay with it.
I mean, ultimately, that would be for the, for the household to sort of suffer if there's.
Okay. Okay. You can word that for us.
No, you can't say diligently.
I wouldn't do that.
We're, we're about to depart. Um, we don't normally do like the council and let everybody speak their mind because we can't stay up that late.
I got one more question before you end. Absolutely. So I was working on the subdivision ordinance. Should I put that aside while we play with, uh, gravel pit ordinance? Cause if dealing with two ordinances at the same time, it'd be a little bit troublesome? Or should I keep going? I was hoping to have that drafted by the end of the month, um, for us to take it. Yeah, let me introduce you to your new town plan. And so, so that this is one of the reasons why we brought her on board is to review and update. And so, I mean, Greg, we'd be happy to have what you work on. But what I would suggest is let's turn that over to our newly hired professional and, and let her start, uh, working on that as well.
I got no problem with that.
I, I wonder if we should do that with the regular ordinance that we are in the middle of tweaking.
When you say the regular ordinance?
Zoning ordinance.
So, you know, it's all a matter of priorities. And so I, I know obviously our subdivision ordinance is wildly outdated, right? And so, but so, um, well, you know, if I were to set the priorities, it might be a different priority than, than what you guys would set. And so maybe, maybe we need some guidance reviews. Hey, we think the zoning ordinance is the, is the priority to review and update that or incorporate it. And then, and then once we eat that out, then we'll tackle subdivision ordinance or vice versa.
I'd say, first of all, obviously we'll give Joel as much attention as he can stand regardless. Uh, on the regular ordinance, we've got relatively small updates that we're thinking of proposing. Uh, they include, uh, lot sizes and setbacks specifically, as well as an update to, um, I'd say something with some argument, uh, would apply to various, although proposal.
Oh, um, there. I can do this like their cluster development.
Cluster development, and we're looking at reducing the lot size minimums and cluster development. Uh, is, is another, uh, update. Lastly, we're looking at putting some of the, the uses more appropriately where they belong in the ordinance. We had everything on the shoreline as a major category, and that was dumb.
Yeah. So, so I think, you know, one of the benefits of having Dawn on board is she's gonna prep the process, not only from a professional planner's standpoint, but with a fresh set of eyes, which I think could be instructive. But I would also suggest that the proper process should be, let's get a cop plan, uh, approved because that's gonna give some guidance and things that, you know, the community wants to see in the zoning ordinance. And then, and then we can use that as somewhat of a guide to, to do some of the things that you just mentioned. So in other words, I would wanna get the cart before the horse. What if we make changes to the zoning ordinance that are contrary to the things that may appear in the citizen-approved common act?
That makes sense.
That's a sneaky question. Everything is citizen-approved, nice try, but we're not following that.
Well, no, but the citizens do not approve the zoning ordinance, but they do. No, they do not.
They, they are.
They don't vote on it. They, they will definitely vote on the cop plan. So, so by, by statute, the citizens have to approve the conference of plan.
You weren't planning on doing it in twenty-three, were you?
Uh, we're gonna have that in front of the voters November seventh.
I knew that.
You wrote the name?
Not the one you care about.
So, so, yeah, so our, uh, the planning director of the Kennebec Valley Council of Government has just endorsed my efforts. But the director of the plan.
Yeah, he's on the payroll. Okay, everybody, good night, and God bless, or whatever. Um, you can stop in the morning, but you have another one, do next, please.
Yeah.
Two minutes.
Right, let's press stop for it. I hate this. You know, it's better race to go.
Just playing on that. If there's no race, no ordinance, we wouldn't necessarily be.